Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Sure, so I have 6 o'clock and I will call the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary Board to order and also the Westminster School District Board. And I guess the first order of business is if there are any adjustments to the agenda, and as I said, I do have one student matter that I need to add to, a student matter that I need to add to executive session.
Let's put on a three introductions, just to let people know who's here. We'll do a round robin of everybody here and everybody online. And you have that additional one, which is the, is that an item that's of concern to both boards, Andy, the exec session thing?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, well then it is. So we've got that twisted. So we'll do that right after assignments of committees and go from there. Okay, so...
All right, so then I will, we'll start with the elementary, the Union Elementary Board and I will, or actually we have comments from the, any comments from the public. I don't know if there's any, anyone out there.
Here's not to be, Andy.
All right. Then we'll move on to nominations for chair for the Union Elementary Board.
All right. Anybody besides me want to do this?
I'll make a motion, then we elect Jack.
Apparently I've got the shirt on, Andy. Think this is where you say, are the nominations still open?
Yeah, are the nominations still open for the Union Elementary Chair?
I'll second the motion.
All right, yes, because we are...
Having a second, then I will close nominations and we will take a vote. And Jack, I actually apologize, I don't know who's, who is there from the Union Elementary.
Well, that's why in a moment we're going to do, we're going to do introductions of everybody in the room, because that's the easiest way to deal with this. Oh, we have, we have three additional members coming in, and so we need to get a couple more chairs. Hold on just a second. For those of you coming in, we are electing the Union Elementary School Board Chair. There's one nomination, unfortunately. Anybody want to put their hand up? No masochists?
I'll say aye.
Okay, well, Andy, are you turning this over to me, or have you called, have you made the decision as to whether the ayes have it?
So I guess we'll take a voice vote and if the, then we'll go from there. So all in favor of Jack, Breyer being the Chair of the Union Elementary Board?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions?
All right, why don't you do the same for the Westminster folks, and then we can take it from there.
Okay, so then I will accept nominations for the Westminster School District.
I would nominate Cheryl Charles.
I have one nomination for Cheryl Charles. Are there anyone else?
I second that.
We have a second. Hearing nothing, I'll close nominations. And through a voice vote, the ayes, if you're in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The report's wrong.
Abstentions? Congratulations, Mr. Chair and Madam Chair. I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Andy.
The one, the first, first adjustment to the agenda is something we're going to call introductions for obvious reasons, and this, without objection, I'm hoping. And the second one would be to, to adjust this to Robert's Rules for Small Boards. Traditionally, small boards are those under 10. We obviously have more people here, but it's two boards. So why don't we, Cheryl, you want to ask people who they are, and why don't we walk everybody around instead of you doing it?
Hi, well, let's just acknowledge first that Fact TV is recording this for the public, and so it will be really helpful for the public to learn who all of the board members are. But let's actually start with the superintendent introducing himself. Let's start on the screen, if we could.
So I'm Andy Haas, I'm Superintendent for Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union. I apologize for not being there, but when, typically when there's, you guys have a meeting, I try to come down south. No, so I do apologize, my wife surprised me with tickets to come see my son play baseball, so, but typically I'm there, so.
Right, and you're here in spirit, for sure. Thank you, Andy. Let's go around again on the, on the screen, and so let's jump to Elise.
Hello, I'm Elise Manning Sterling, and I'm on the W N U E S D Board.
Thanks, Elise. One of those from Westminster on the Union Elementary School District Board, yeah. Mr. Merrill?
I'm Hardy Merrill, presently in Florida, and I'm on the, from Grafton, and I'm on the W S N E U G Board.
Thanks, thanks.
We have trouble with it too, Hardy, believe me.
One of, one of the many important people at the Supervisor Union office has joined us tonight. Nicole, if you'd introduce yourself.
She's busy taking notes.
Yeah, she's taking notes, well...
Poor Nicole, she tries to say anonymous.
No, anyway, Nicole Barnett, who does just an amazing job, is the Assistant to the Superintendent, and has already been a great help to many of the new school board members, so thank you, Nicole. Yeah, let's go over to Ricky.
I'm Ricky Adams, I'm our SU technology director.
And I'm David Major, and at the moment, I am, together with Elise Manning, am serving as the Westminster representative to the W N E S U Board until June 30, when Westminster will no longer have a part in the Union District Board.
I'm Jeff Carlstrom, and I was just elected to the Westminster Board. I don't know the initials.
I'm U E S D. I'm Jack Breyer, and it's the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. So W N U E S D, and boy, are we going to change that thing when we get a chance.
I'm Lynn Morgan on the UE Board for Athens. Cheryl Charles, now again Chair, thank you very much, of the Westminster School Board. And we call Jeff, we're often referred to as the Westminster Community Schools, so you'll see that with them.
I'm Karen Blanchard, I'm the new representative on the school board for Westminster.
I'm Team Bealsey, I am also new on the board from Westminster.
I'm Krista Gay, and I'm the new representative from Athens.
I'm Charlie Hutchison, I'm Representative for Westminster School Board.
All right, well, we have a full complement, it's absolutely wonderful. Thanks to everybody who's willing to run, and thank you for your service. Jack, back to you.
All right, on our list of reorganization items is an election of a Vice Chair. The Vice Chair's duty is to run the meeting when the Chair has run away for the night. And we do need one, because it does come up from time to time. I'm looking for nominations from the, from the W N U E S D Board. Boy, the sounds of silence are overwhelming. I will nominate Lynn. I will second that. Listening for further nominations, not hearing anything, I will ask for a motion to instruct the Chair to cast one ballot for Lynn Morgan as a Vice Chairperson. All right, we can do the voice vote here. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seems we have unanimity on that. Election of Clerk, another, another job. What does a clerk do? Clerk is legally responsible for the record of meetings being accurate and posted. Now, here we are fortunate to have Nicole as our scribe, but it still means that the clerk is to ensure that agendas and minutes are both promptly posted where they're supposed to be, in a place where you can find them, both on the website and preferably in the town halls of the three communities. So that's the gig, and it's an important one, because sometimes this falls down. Is there anyone who would like to be nominated who hasn't run away fast enough not to be? I'm going to disappoint the...
I could...
Go ahead.
I was saying I can, I can take it on.
I would like that very much, Elise, and you beat my nominating you by just a split second. Lovely of you, so thank you for that. But of course, that means we're, I'm nominating Elise Manning. We still have a second, we need a second, we have that. Are there any other nominations? Prequisite amount of silence. So I will entertain a motion to instruct the Chair to cast one ballot for Elise Manning Sterling as the Clerk of the W N U E S D.
Let's move.
All right, voice vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Any ayes, abstentions? None of that. All right, so we're good with that. Thank you, Elise, that's extremely helpful. Now, there really is, the District Clerk is listed here, and I want to explain that. What is a District Clerk? The District Clerk is the person who runs the district meeting. It's not the Board Clerk, it's a District Clerk. And technically, the District Clerk serves until, until Town Meeting Day. So you may have wondered what we've been doing for a clerk for the last several days, and let's just say we don't want to ask too, we don't want to inquire too closely. I'm prepared, because I've asked her, and she didn't say no, probably anyway, to nominate Kim Rucker for that position. Kim has done that for us in the past. This would be an ad interim appointment. According to legal counsel, we simply need, the Board can nominate someone until the next regularly scheduled or scheduled district meeting, and that district meeting, we're really, really hoping will be later in April. So that's what that is. And what does she do? She makes certain that the people who show up at the district meeting are in fact registered voters in the, in the three towns, and is the official recorder of votes for that meeting. So that's, it's an important job, and Kim has been splendid at it. Are there other nominations for this? Again, that quiet reticence. So again, I'll ask for a, a motion to direct the Chair to cast one vote for Kimberly Rucker as the District Clerk. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you all. Any ayes? I think I heard all unanimous. Excellent. So Kim, wherever you are, I'm sorry to do this to you again. Now, appoint District Treasurer. The Treasurer is the person whose signature is on the checks. There are other duties which involve some checking in on, on what's going on at the finance office, but principally, that is the duty, is to, to be that I've been it for the, for the SU Board from time to time, and it's not a heavy burden. Do we, have we heard anything from the current holder of that position? Because we weren't sure, and because this is something that, you know, we haven't, we didn't ask him, I did reach out to...
I heard that he would rather not.
Well, that was kind of my impression. Rod Lawrence has agreed, if nominated, to serve in that position. Rod is a former member of the Town Board for Grafton, and has continued to have an interest in education, and is a finance guy. And I would like to nominate him with the Board's permission. If there is someone else that would like to do this, it cannot be a member of this Board, just in case anyone's wondering. They can serve as Assistant Treasurer, but they cannot serve as Treasurer. Hearing deathly silence again, so I will, I will entertain a motion to select Rod Lawrence for this position. Excellent, I'll need a second from someone.
It's not gonna...
Let's put Hardy down as the second for this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Rod, wherever you are, again, I'm sorry. Now Assistant Treasurer, again, this, it shouldn't be a particularly burdensome thing, this, a, a Board Member can do, and this is merely to fill in if there is an absence. And a member of this Board can serve in that capacity. Hardy?
Yes.
You didn't involve anything, are you up for being an Assistant Treasurer?
Yes. Yes.
Excellent. Then I would nominate Hardy Merrill to be the Assistant Treasurer of our rural district. And my, I need a second for that. Reliable as always, thank you very much, Lynn. Now I need a motion to, to direct the Chair to cast one ballot, et cetera. You got that? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Hardy, congratulations on your exalted position. Now... You may regret this, Hardy, but, all right. Now, voting members to the W N E S U Board. The W N E S U Board is really the coordinating council of all the districts. And increasingly, we have tried to concentrate a lot of the initiatives there, simply because, well, for one thing, it saves a Superintendent for having to explain the same thing to four boards, and also because the SU Board now owns a couple of functions exclusively. They own curriculum, they own, to the largest extent you can think of, special education, and they own transportation. And if, once you're on a Board long enough, you'll know that special ed and transportation are the things people yell about the most. So that's, that's what that Board does, and as I said, our, our model here is to try to have operationally as many things concentrated at the SU Board as we can, even though the constituent Town Boards still own, own the responsibility, being accountable to their towns. It's a sort of a hybrid model that we follow piggly piggly, and we need three people for that. And I'm wondering if any of you are interested in it?
Who am I interested in it?
Lynn has done it admirably.
Because I'm only willing to be on the Board until June 30, I don't think it's wise that I...
All right. Krista, would you like to?
What's the time commitment for that?
It's two evenings a month, and maybe one. What if we can manage to make it that?
It's just with my work schedule, I'm on...
Well, I appreciate that. Hardy, you know, I'd like you to be involved with it too. The question's going to be, A, your time commitment, and you know, it's good to be here physically, they're not critical?
Okay, how, what day is it usually?
It's the fourth Wednesday of each month typically, that's the standard.
And then the alternate is the second?
Right.
Wednesdays are okay with me.
All right. Well, Hardy, I'd like you and Lynn to do that, if possible. I'm going to put my O in at least for now, as well, and I'm going to ask Elise to be our standing alternate if we, if somebody's sick or unavailable. I think it's better to have that rather than improvise when people can't make it. We'll try to, we'll try to not call on you to do it very often, Elise, but if you can, that'd be really helpful.
All right, yep.
Right. And those are appointments, candidly, that I get to make, but I always like to have, have people be okay with it, and my colleagues to be okay with it. What else we got here? Truant Officer. What does a truant officer do? A truant officer does what you think it does, you know, because sometimes kids have sort of disappeared off the radar, and we have, to the best of my recollection, appointed the, we've sometimes appointed the Town Constable, but more often we've appointed the, the Bellas Falls Police Department to do that, or the Sheriff's Department to do that. I think because of the distance, the Sheriff's is probably the best, but...
Wyndham County.
Yeah, Wyndham County Sheriff's Department. Is there any thoughts on this one, my dear lady? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to appoint the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office as the truant officers of record for our district. Excellent. So I will entertain a motion to vote, your name? Oh, this is discussion.
So this is not a matter of you appointing, this is a matter of...
This is a Board appoint.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office as a truant officer.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, we've got unanimity once again. Now, there is an aye here that's wrong. We do not appoint representatives to our technical centers advisory councils. That's traditionally a high school matter, so I'm going to delete that. Now, appoint warrant signers. There's two methods of doing this. One is to appoint designated warrant signers. The other is to have essentially any, is it any two or any three? I think it's any three, isn't it, Andy? Yeah, any three members. I do think it's important to have at least one person be available to do it all the time. This past year, it was Elise and I. Go ahead.
Jack, I think for, for those new to the Board, it would probably be good to explain what a warrant signer is.
Sorry, the one, the most, the most experienced, and I didn't explain it, thank you. What does a warrant signer do? Every single check cut in the name of this district is put together in a very large file of checks with a, with a record of them when they were paid. This is, if you really want to get into the, really want to get the guts of where we spend our money and why, it's really a good, it's a good place to spend that time. Now, that can, Hardy, that can be something that you can do remotely. They will send you at least the outline, and you can ask for more information. They've done it for me for years. But if you really want to get into the, you know, probe into the innards of how we spend our money and what we're doing, I tend to flag at least three items every time I go down. It's probably twice a month that you have to do it, but there'll be one for personnel, and there'll be one for all the expense checks. And it's good to have someone that knows how to do that. You've done it as well.
Yeah, I've done it, and I've just added, it's actually a step that was skipped over the last couple of years. We haven't had warrant signers, I believe. Is that correct?
We have, but we, we're not going in to see them in person until we requested that recently.
Right.
So lately, Elise and Jack have both been going in in person. Were we reviewing them electronic?
Electronic.
And the limitation was we couldn't see all the backup, which we found to really be essential.
Right.
And it was, it was a COVID impact, that was the issue around it, but we have reinstated it. So it's, we have always reviewed warrants, but it was not optimal for a while in terms of seeing everything behind it.
And this is particularly, particularly challenging sometimes, because as, you know, everybody who lives in Wyndham County knows, this, SU has had their issues with a system called e-finance, which tells you very, very little about what the checks actually say. The data record, the input record is not great, so you really have to go in and actually look if you want to understand it. And I promise you, you'll see three things that will raise questions every month, and it really does help to have somebody willing to look and willing to ask.
I'll just add that it usually took me, aside from the getting to the SU office and then going back, it took maybe 20 minutes of checking in, looking through the documents. Occasionally, there would be questions, as Jeff mentioned, but it's, it's that kind of twice monthly, pre-routine thing when you stop in a town, and it has to be done within a certain period of time, but not on an exact day.
Right. The main, the main thing is, it's just saying, we are, we have fiduciary responsibility for all the money spent in tax payers' name, and you should not only know what it's been on, but have some understanding of why. Yeah, Elise, go ahead. And you're muted, Elise. Still muted.
Okay. I'd be, I'd be willing to be a warrant signer again, still.
All right. Hardy, is this something you think you'd be up for?
Is this for the whole school district, or just Grafton, Athens, or what is it?
Uh, is this for the whole school district, or just Grafton-Bathons, or what is this?
The W, it's just our, our joint school district, Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. So from now till July, it would be the one, the three towns, the two, the two schools, and after July 1st, it would be just Grafton Elementary.
Yes, I'll do it.
That would be phenomenal. Uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna slough this one until, until my colleagues leave. Uh, do you want to do this, David?
I, I, again, it's, it's only a couple of months.
All right.
And, uh, then, then we'd have to go through this procedure again.
All right.
I think it, I think it's better to find somebody else.
Then I'll do it. Unless somebody else. Lynn, you want to run the hard way? We're all the money spent. Krista? Oh, I'm just seeing absolute lack of enthusiasm. Okay, then, then that would be the three for that. So, moving right along, because we don't want all night with this. Set time, date, and location of regular monthly meetings. Traditionally, we have a, we, we have one meeting a month, but we also have a backup. And we're going to try very hard, aren't we all, not to have special meetings. There are special meetings that happen, uh, and we try to keep those to a minimum. We have been meeting on the second and fourth Thursdays, with emphasis on the fourth Thursday, uh, and we have tried hard to alternate between here and Westminster, and it would be my recommendation to continue that, uh, at least through, uh, through July, until July 1st. And I may come back to you with a recommendation to do something even more broad, because, uh, on the list of things I would like to talk about, you'll see, uh, there's a seven, invitation to Rockingham Board, and that would be to have all the elementary school boards meet on at least, uh, a semi-regular basis, at least a couple times a year, and maybe more often than that if we can persuade them that that's a good idea. Um, so for now would be, that, that's the pitch, is second and fourth Thursdays, emphasis on the fourth being the meeting you have to come to, the second being the meeting that we may have to have if there's business to be done, and we would be all, and, and to alternate. Now, we've done six o'clock, but six o'clock's hard for people. This is a time to say six o'clock's hard. Not hearing a lot. So I'm going to, I, I will move, just to get this done, that this board meet at 6:00 PM on the second and fourth Thursday, with the fourth Thursday being the principal meeting, and that we continue to alternate between the Grafton Elementary School and the, uh, and the Westminster Community School. Excellent. So I'm gonna say that's a motion. Nicole, for the record, I moved, it was seconded by Lynn. And I do have to get back to the small boards thing and that. Alrighty, final item. Establish the newspaper to be used to announce school board functions and activities. You can have more than one. The issue is that it has to be a daily, or, or, so we could do something like have the Prattleboro reformer, uh, publish a notice, and if you would like in addition to have, say, the Athenian or the Westminster, uh, webs, what's it, what's Westminster's website?
Gazette.
The Gazette's website, because...
Well, the Gazette is a publication.
Right, but don't they also do a website, or, or, are they not doing that now? Okay.
And it's a monthly.
It's strictly monthly and print. All right, well, that's not going to work. Uh, the Athenian is kind, is more ad hoc, there's a paper, but there's also the electronic version.
Yeah, it's, uh, it all goes out once a month, and updates, uh, to N E D E.
All right, well, that sounds like our newspaper of record kind of boils down to, uh, the Prattleboro reformer unless it's somebody that wants something else in addition. So I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
Would it be Prattleboro reformer be the newspaper of record?
N U E S D. All right. Uh, I still need a second. Did I get one? I did. Excellent. All right. So that covers everything, uh, on the reorganization of our board. But we're gonna do committee assignments in a minute, but I think it's time to, uh, to let the Westminster Board do their thing.
All right, thank you. Uh, and just want to say again for everybody to benefit, you can tell this is the reorganization meeting, so it's one of the more ponderous as we go through all of these steps to make it official for us to do the, the business of the board for the next period of time. So thanks to committee for your, for your patience. I think the first order of business for the Westminster School Board is to elect a vice chairperson. Jack's done a great job of describing all the duties and responsibilities. I'd like to start by nominating Charlie Hetchison. He can serve in that role for all, for all. Are there any other nominations? I need a second, by the way. Second, okay. So Cheryl moved, and Karen Blanchard seconded that Charlie Hetchison be the vice chairperson of the Westminster School Board. Do we need that step, Jeff, that you introduce the, the requesting a motion to direct the chair, the cast one vote, or do we, what, what's that protocol?
That, that's the protocol when you are dealing with Robert's rules, and I didn't change them because we are yet to get the point of adopting Robert's rules for small
For small boards.
Yeah. And that's just the protocol I've been hearing for the last 20 years, so what do I know? It seems like the one we do.
Does it apply to small boards?
I think it only applies, it, it applies to boards using Robert's rules if you don't want, and that's the only reason I've used it. If you, if you want to take a break and do the small board adoption and dispense with pompousness, absolutely.
David does it for me.
Well, just, just, if, if that's one option, the other option is essentially to call for a vote of everyone. You don't need it to go through that step. It's, it, six of one, half a dozen.
Okay, very good. I'd like to call for a vote for the election of the vice chair of the Westminster School Board. Uh, and we need not do this individually. I think it is just the Westminster Board that would be voting, uh, for this position. So, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hetchison. All right. So Charlie Hetchison will serve as, um, the vice chair, and, uh, the next physician is the clerk, and you again heard from Jack, keeping track of the minutes, helping us with that documentation as needed. Um, I think I'll again nominate Charlie, who has served in that role for the last period of time again.
Let's see if anybody else would like to do that. I'll go ahead and tell them.
I second.
All right, thank you. And I'll call for a vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I know it's...
And one of the things that's interesting, when I first joined the board, um, our, our clerk actually helped with a lot of getting information about, this, this was Rick Gordon at that time, with the, with the public school. He often wrote articles that would get visibility in the press, and I just want it noted for the record that Charlie has been helping Liz Harvey, the principal of the Westminster School, and helps her have a monthly article that has been getting in the press, and appears at Westminster School Whisper, and it's just a great help. So thank you, Charlie, for your, for your support for the school and the community in that way. Um, I think, and I ask David Major this, I think that the district clerk, the district treasurer, the assistant treasurer need not do no action until we're actually official, uh, again, as a board, and that will occur at town meeting on April 30th, at least those elections. Is that correct, David?
Correct.
And again, for the public who might not know, uh, David Major is the moderator for the town of Westminster, so we're quite fortunate to have you in both of these roles for a short period of time, and then fully the moderator for the town of Westminster. So we will at that town meeting, elect the clerk, appoint the district clerk, pardon me, not elect the clerk, appoint the district clerk, the district treasurer, the assistant treasurer. But we do, at this point, very significantly, need to have three people to represent the Westminster School Board on the supervisory union board. So, um, that is an appointment. I would like to determine if there is anyone who would be willing to do that. It's, it actually is, I think, a fascinating place to sit, because you get a picture of what's going on throughout the district. And I would say, you, you know, some know, but everyone doesn't know, that when Act 46 was implemented, one of the options we thought was available to us was something called an alternative governance structure. And the approach to that, that David and I and many others really worked on, is to try to figure out ways for all the towns in our supervisory union to work together more closely. And we had wanted, um, that alternative governance structure to be the supervisory union structure, where we all come together on a regular basis, and talk about what's really going on in each of the towns. Instead, the State Board of Education did forcibly merge Westminster, Athens, and Grafton, which led to our union elementary school district for the last couple of years. We know that in this 18-month process, we're now a part of Westminster, did successfully withdraw from the union, not because we don't love Athens and Grafton, but because the townspeople have a strong commitment.
We loved you enough to let you go.
Yes, right, exactly, exactly. But what I'm leading to with all of this, we actually think that there are additional opportunities through the supervisory union board to create even more shared thinking among all accounts, and that includes the high school, you know. And so I would just say that, in addition to what Jack said, film services is also one of the things that we do.
Yes, thank you, I forgot about that.
That we do through the supervisory union. Um, so with that, I would welcome any persons who would be willing to serve on that part of the board.
I was just trying to mean that I've been doing it for the last year. I have a conflict of interest because I'm a truck driver, and it's a, so I am gonna step back from that role this year. But I would say it's been a very interesting ride to be in those meetings, and see the dynamic of the politics and the discourse between the different towns. It's been part of that business of trying to meld the towns into some kind of union, where there's, uh, some kind of, you know, cross pollination between the towns. I would encourage anybody else who's new to the board to save this up.
Charlie, could you tell me how often you meet?
It's, again, once a month. It tends to be the same week as the town board meeting, so it's a Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday duo, but, um, I'm getting overdone with it one week. And then I think there might be an alternate meeting sometimes. I go, I'm mostly attended by remotely, so it's relatively, uh, yeah, it's supposed to be low impact on my schedule. So, although it's good to be getting...
I'd be mine to try this out myself, if it's...
All right, outstanding.
All right.
Jeff, all right, outstanding.
I'll, I'll tell you, you'll have a remarkable amount of impact on, on what happens. I, I appreciate everybody's time thing, but, uh, it's, it's important. You know, the irony is that, that the, uh, the Union Elementary School District in Westminster have six votes, high school and Rockingham together have six votes. Uh, we do have, we have a disproportionate impact on decisions of the SU advisory union, and, uh, it's, it's important that everybody sort of pay attention, and, uh, we have a lot of work to do. Uh, the, the issues about governance, the issues about, um, about finances that have been so much in the news, issues about labor negotiations, about policies, all tend to go there first. And, uh, and this is an important place to have a voice on getting those issues addressed, because they need addressing.
Okay, great. If someone, I'll continue to serve the high, but happy, happy to continue to do that. Uh, and, and then I would encourage you team, to the extent that you can, just consider to vote when you can. And they, they tend to be recorded, so maybe while you're, you can watch it. And we can also alert everybody in topics of particular significance. Technically, Westminster, at the discretion of the SU Board Chair.
Right, so...
And we can be there.
This, this will be a very subtle plug, uh, try to see if we can always ensure, you know, at least for now, for the next couple of months, ensure that the SU Board Chair gives the Westminster Board as much latitude to be present and vote as possible.
We, we are, I mean, the, the State Board of Education did authorize us to be appointed for the SU Board primarily for matters relating to budget, some challenges, and things like that.
And Tina, just, uh, in your thinking, um, prior, I was on that board for a while, but prior to being on that board, uh, in, in important meetings, I came, it's, it's open, of course, to board members, and very useful to have board members, whether or not that they're official, uh, SU representative, so, being.
And actually, we should, uh, we should actually ask you if you consider being the official alternate, because there might be a time when that, if you wouldn't mind serving in that role.
In fact, that's an important point, everyone. Every member of all boards are members of the supervisory union. The, uh, the, the three are the voting members. At least that's the model that we use. Uh, we, we think that if you have the time, not a requirement, but if you have the time, uh, it would be good for you to be there, even if you don't have a vote, particularly in the early going, just so that you have a better understanding of the dynamics of this. Because one, those dynamics could change if you don't like them. And two, uh, this is a bit of a lift for a lot of people. There's, this is not, a school board governance is not like a select board, or some committee you've been on at a nonprofit. There's a lot of stuff that's very jargon intensive. There's a lot of bureaucracy. There's, uh, uh, rules come from agencies you've never even heard of, and, uh, it's, it's good to, to dive in and, and learn that. You'll save yourself three months of confusion to the extent that you can make those meetings. So, consider that as you, uh, work with the script.
As we look at the remainder of the items under the organization of the board, um, we don't, we need to find a truant officer that's handled through the Union Elementary School District. Uh, we don't have warrants to sign, because we're not yet responsible for our, our, our budget. Uh, we're, I think, you know, we're here in a joint meeting, um, which is wonderful. I don't think we need to change on the date. At this point, it's anticipated, everybody. Uh, and, you know, the newspaper, we need to have to do that separately. Exactly, exactly. So how, how do you want to, um, go to committee assignments, Jack? Um, you talked about the executive session being after committee assignments.
Well, I might actually want to just check in quick with, uh, with Andy, because it's getting dark, the lights are on, and I don't know if the game's over or not.
Uh, it's only in the fourth inning, Jack, but I, I'm, I'm perfectly fine. Um, I, I can, I'm looking just over my computer, so I'm, I'm okay. Stay on, so.
If you need to yell at the Empire District, just mute, that's all I ask. All right, fine. The, uh, before we go further, let's do the thing, uh, which is to, uh, you, the Robert's rules in their full formal, uh, architecture are the default unless a board adopts what are called Robert's rules, uh, for small boards, which is more freewheeling, tends to be what happens even when we try to adhere to the formal rules. And that means that, you know, we need one person to nominate. Uh, I, I can do things like, uh, ask people their opinion rather than have them hold their hand up to, to volunteer it, and, uh, and people can speak more than once to a motion, which is the type of stuff that happens when you're, you know, got a large assembly, which we're not quite. So I'm going to... So I'm going to move that we adopt Robert's Rules for small boards.
We could do that jointly.
All right, sounds like we're both jointly, which is a good example of the informality of Robert's Rules for small boards.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I need a motion.
I, I move that the two boards sitting here meeting jointly adopt Robert's Rules for small boards.
Uh, and I'll do the same for ours, just for the record. Um, one more thing, I want to try to get you copies of Robert's Rules for Small Boards. There is Robert's Rules Order, which I have pretty much memorized at this point over the decades. But small boards, I found something that, that weighs it out nicely. I'm told there is like a single card kind of thing, and if I can find it, I'll send it around to everybody. That and getting you a copy of Vermont's education statutes, which used to be a gift that everybody, every board person got, are my two commitments to you all. See if we can get that in your hands, you know, have it and say, hey, what about this? And aren't you out of order? Because we all enjoy that. Um, so, uh, if there's no further discussion, and I haven't asked if there's any discussion. Is there any discussion at this? I can send it to the Quaker church meeting. Then I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a vote here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Gosh, I'm not hearing any, Cheryl, I think we're unanimous about that. Committee assignments, why don't you walk us through committee assignments, Cheryl?
So, um, Chris, I, I, I know the Union Elementary, how do we want to approach it? I mean, it, it seems like at this point, there's still value, actually, in Westminster having a building and ground committee, even, because it does have financial implications. And I think it would just be helpful for us to do that. So I think we do want to proceed with a committee for the Union Elementary and for the Westminster.
Yeah, I think the buildings and grounds is pretty important because this year, there's, there is some federal money for renovation, uh, you know, in graft, and we also have a title issue that we're going to get into at some point. But you'll need it simply because you want to plan. To some extent, buildings and grounds sort of overlaps with budget, and if you're going to do capital improvements to your facility, uh, sometimes it's a multi-year process. Somebody needs to know what it is you need to fix, what it is that's not working. Uh, and I, I think getting, starting, diving into that and starting today is not a bad thing at all.
Do we know that I have two or three, or maybe?
Usually you have, you have, um, you have somebody who you appoint, the committee chair, uh, and, and then solicit members. I always, uh, I always call up everybody and then beg them to, to staff it. Uh, the reason for that is if the chair's there, then you've got a quorum, as long as there's one other person present. And that solves the issue of sometimes deriding attendance. Because again, people do have lives, you know, you may not think so after you've been on this board for a couple of months.
Christian, could you tell us what other boards are, so we have a sense of what, as we prefer, involved there? What other, sorry, committees, what other committees are involved?
Oh, okay, well, there, um, there is, there is a list. The second one is budget and finance, and our approach to that has always been the boards as a committee of the whole, because that's critically important and it was more important to do that.
Right.
Back to buildings and grounds, um, is, you know, a couple of people are there. And, and that, we want to talk to the principal, learn what the issues are, but it tends not to be a heavy issue. The teacher and support staff negotiations, as a point of information, Jack and I have both served, and you know, are serving this finished, the teacher negotiations, and Priscilla Lambert from Rockingham is on that, and that, there are only a few of us, but they're tending to represent each district. That's how that part works.
And, and we have been requested by the Education Association to maintain continuity of that. It's not that we would enjoy having somebody else do this, believe me, we really would. But the, uh, but we're, as a courtesy, that's why we're, we've signed up for the duration and with your permission, you can have it.
Right, and, and we'll see how the professional negotiations go. That is not yet officially started, but it will be next. We might as well add that it's that the teacher negotiations have completed. We haven't gone through the full signing process for that. But if it all goes through, there, it's a three-year agreement. And so it will be a while before we all have to get geared up, um, to, to look at the negotiations, again.
When it happens, it's, it's a very, a significant job, but it's not every year.
That's correct.
We, we, we would recommend that people who are thinking that they might be interested in doing this, uh, attend some training that we've talked to the Federal Mediation Service about providing. So at the end of year two, uh, we suggest that be something to do. And when that time comes, we'll talk to you all about it, uh, but that's not today.
You know, there are three other committees. One is done very closely with the supervisory union because it's curriculum related. It's a continuous improvement plan, um, where we are, but at least one person participating in that. Again, tending to be more curriculum oriented. Audit is another committee that I think is pretty of the whole.
It depends, we, we probably are going to, in, in our, in our case, combine budget and audit because I think that you can't, if you build a budget without understanding what your current money is, uh, it's hard. I think both Cheryl and I found, in particular this year, that if we hadn't been involved with the audit side of the house, the budget side have been really miserable process. Not that it wasn't to some extent anyway.
And the last of the committees is policy. And, and that meets, not very often, we just went through a whole process with Priscilla Lambert chairing that committee for the supervisory union. So we would be designating a person from each of our boards, I think just one.
Yeah.
Uh, to participate in the kind of union-wide policy committee, you know, for the whole.
It doesn't hurt to have some legal background, because education and wording is important. Uh, I, I would say that our process is that we try to get the form of policies done at the SU level and submit them to the individual districts for up and down votes. The, uh, the one exception are things where there's some peculiar thing to say to high school or to individual, uh, town districts or, you know, elementary school districts. Because, uh, we have found over the years that sometimes a board says this policy is insufficient. We'd like to add a little, it's not something that are, that any rational superintendent really wants you to do, but it's been done because sometimes it's required, and that's fine. We, that's the process to it.
Cheryl, as you said, there is an IT policy committee, which Ricky shares, because I have a member all over there. Fits in that list?
No, it isn't, and it should be.
Information.
Yeah, because that's the other thing, is you can be on an SU board, uh, you can be in an SU committee without necessarily being a voting member of the SU board, there are committees, and more than ever.
Can you explain, Dave, to me, a little bit more CIP, Continuous Improvement Plan? It tends to be a little, it's, Andy, would you address a definition of Continuous Improvement Plan?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Cheryl. So it's, um, so basically, it's like a strategic plan. So it's, it's planning out, um, goals that we're trying to address typically around curriculum, but also around, um, student behaviors and stuff of that nature. So, um, every, we're, we're supposed to do, we, we kind of do one every year or one every other year. So it really, and we have to do it for our title grants, uh, so. But it lays out, like, what are our goals, what are we trying to accomplish with student, you know, improving student performance?
Thank you. And when, when I first got involved with it, it was building level, but then there is a district level plan as, as well.
That's correct, there's, so there's, there's, there are building level SIPs, and then there are, then there's a, an SU level SIP. And, and so the, the two should always work in conjunction with each other.
The hope there is, again, there's, you know, you have members of our committees, of our two committees, of our two boards, have some education background. I don't think it's a bad thing to have that, but I would certainly encourage anybody to, to do it if they're interested.
Absolutely, I would, I mean, I don't offer any, I would go and share with you.
That's great. Perfect. So if somebody from the Union Elementary District did that.
Um, from the abstract, I, I gave it to the last.
Okay, we've got Krista for that.
All right.
And we've got T over there, so thank you, go. The, anybody volunteering from each district for the building and grounds? All right, Lamb is yours for the Union Elementary District. And Karen, did you leave your name?
I didn't.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going to take one on, so to speak, and get myself.
So we need someone from Westminster School Board.
I'll just say it, it tends to be some, something where you, you meet once or twice a year with the, uh, the head of maintenance of the school and just kind of help. Be that main board rapid, that maintenance person can get work for.
I can, I'll raise my hand on this.
Really?
Who else is the other person?
I feel like you might have even raised your hand.
Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff's on it.
Quick, quick, get it.
Great, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Karen. All right. And, and Lamb is, yeah, no, Krista. No, I'm sorry, the CIP is Krista, not Andy.
Actually, because we do have issues that will continue in for at least the next several months, uh, involving the Westminster facility, uh, which one of my two Westminster members would like to put their hand up, I don't put their hand up quite long.
For?
Or buildings and grounds, so we spread the law, well, I, I would like.
You want someone besides with?
Well, we, well, we think, I think it's important to have two folks, if that's okay. All right, all right. And, and again, these are all open committees, and people can, can join, particularly if there are issues of interest, and we'll try to make sure you all know, have, have as much, uh, opportunity to input as possible. My goal this year, like it is every year, though it never happens, is to try to have as much work done at the committee level so that the, the board meetings are briefer than this one's turning out to be. All righty, what else we got?
I think.
Policy, yeah, we, uh, policy, I think policy person reached forward that we used to start with for the, for the policy, uh, for the SU policy committee is, is. Yes.
Okay.
And I don't see any reason why we can't have multiples here, so. And, and this is part of my stepping away from some of this, so.
So Krista volunteered for the Union and Charlie for the Westminster.
Right, and I also, and, and when it's also was valuable to everybody this past year, so.
Okay.
Continue that. We'll send them up, we'll send it up to the bike hall, if that's okay.
Now, that seems to be quite often, I seem to get notices about the policy committee quite a lot.
Well, let me explain why. This is going to be embarrassing. Somewhere about the point when Chris Kivvy left his superintendency and Mr. Pratt picked up his superintendency, literally the entire policy record, everything that we had created since 2009 disappeared. Digital, I don't know, I just know it went away, it shouldn't have gone away, but it did. So as a consequence, the policy committee has been running in overdrive to make certain that we at least have the policies taken care of that we legally are obliged to. And hopefully during the course of this year, get that policy manual back up to being fully, to fully, uh, what everybody else is in states is. Uh, a lot of it is boilerplate. Uh, we have stolen policies from other districts quite freely and happily. Um, and so, but again, it's a matter, I, I'd like to get the policies that we have to get done, done. And then we can have, talk about policies that we would like for our district, about things like governance and ethics, things about just how we do things, you know, emergency policies, you know. A building burnt down, right, kind of sprinkler system go bad at Saxons River. Well, but what if it had been a flood and the building had been out of commission for, for a month? You know, what is the process? Those, those are the policies I'd like us to be able to get to, but we can't, we don't even get the basic stuff down.
In fact, I'll, I'll just note that each town, or rather, each district owns the policy. I mean, it is, they are the ones responsible. Westminster, once it gets reestablished, is going to be responsible for the policies for the Westminster School. But for simplicity's sake and for equity across the four towns, the four towns and the high school that were all sort of together with, we try to keep the policies as much as possible and work on them together and more or less uniform. So that's why the policy committee tends to work as a committee within the, or at the SU or with the SU or with the other districts.
And, and I think it's a really good point, one of the things, you know, we, we're pointing this very interesting nuance in that we want to make certain that each, you know, we had big pride about making certain that each, each town or each, in our case, the now smaller Union District, has a China. But on the other hand, uh, we recognize that if we work as a network of closely coordinating districts, that, uh, it's not a top-down environment, but, uh, we hope to have things as tightly connected as possible while maintaining the accountability at the town or district level. Does that appear cut out this?
I would mention that there's one other SU level committee that, that has been formed to look at the federal funding, it is referred to as the ESIR monies. And I have served on that and happily continue to serve on that, on that committee. Given as much information as needed.
It's not on here.
It's not.
It is not on here.
It's like IT was not on there.
Correct.
And what is it called?
Uh, it's, it's the Elementary and Secondary Recovery Act Committees, uh, and the whole supervisory union. Just all this money is administered through the supervisory union, not at the local level. Although Andy gets the input of the principals and the hard block or different people. Yeah, Andy, do you want to make any comments about this, Rick?
Um, I, I think you covered it pretty well, Cheryl, but, you know, we, the, the basic is when the money comes into the SU, it's how, we look at it as how, it doesn't get equally distributed or, or prorated out based on student population. It's, it's based on how our entire community sees the need to utilize those funds. And we're best to have the biggest impact across the SU, so. And I, and for me, it's been very helpful to have that input because it's a lot of money and you need to be transparent with it, but at the same time, you, you need that, um, that shared vision, so.
Right, and, you know, just for those who might not know, it's, it's federal funding over about a three-year period, and the total for this supervisory union is about eighteen to twenty million dollars. So it's significant money.
So you'd say almost equivalent of our combined budgets?
Their highest, their highest in the state, yeah. So that's, you know, and I want to this, I'll just commend Andy for this. His leadership style is so collaborative, always seeking information from a variety of people. And so he, he facilitates these meetings. We meet actually weekly, most weeks, not every week, but. So Jack, I think with that, is it time to do the executive session?
Yeah, well, we just take a quick pop here and, because I.
Wait, you think it just.
We do have, we do have, we do have other business, but I think it's fair, if the student matter is eight, we can move it up. You can do that. And so rather, let's do that ahead of these other items.
That's what you suggested a while ago.
Yeah. So, so that's eight, eight, but we're going to do it now. Andy, are you in a place where?
And, and then I think so the only thing to do is have fact TV.
That's correct.
Like everybody else, or perhaps they will, this part of it.
Yeah, the, the, now, just so you all understand how executive sessions work. Executive sessions only happen for certain things. They happen for items such as negotiations of any type, contract type of stuff, where the, where the, where the, where board interests could be adversely affected from premature disclosure. They also happen for student matters because students have privacy and we respect that. There are, there are a number of delineated items. There's some language that any formal Robert's rules is required. In this environment, it's not required, but that's the basis. And so we would say, in this case, we have, we entertain a motion to go to executive session because of student matter or confidentiality is necessary to, to ensure the privacy of those involved. And so that would be the language you would be looking for from one of you, if you would like to use it.
Jack, I'm assuming then that, that there were, this meeting has no other business that fact TV would be involved?
Well, the, the, the other, usually we ask fact TV to step away and then have them come back in at the conclusion of the, of the executive session. If there is, and I don't, and I'm not anticipating a vote on anything on this. Andy, am I wrong in that? Or are you going to be asking a resolution from us?
Uh, we may need a resolution, yes.
And so we will need a vote and that should be recorded. And we do still have the invitations, the Rockingham Board item as an, as an item. We have this employee unpaid leave request. Is that also a confidential matter, Andy?
Yeah, we could talk about it there, but we'll need a vote on that, too.
Personnel is one of those covered items. And then when we get to, to the rest of these items, the district planning stuff is strictly, is strictly the Unified District. However, negotiations update is a joint item. So probably at the conclusion of this executive session, we talk about negotiations and then, then let our Westminster colleagues go free and spend a few more minutes on the other items. So that seems, that a good order for everybody? All right, so I guess, Andy, Ricky, this is a time where we say a sign art effect for a few minutes?
Does it give fact TV any kind of estimate or?
Ten minutes, fifteen? What do you think, Andy? How long is this going to take? Ten? All right, so we'll see you back in ten minutes. It is seven twenty-seven and we are back in public session. We have two motions in front of us. And I'm listening for a motion having to do with the teacher matter. Someone would give me a motion? Yes.
Kim Doian. Kim Doian.
I am moved that Kim Dorland be allowed a day without pay.
All right. And we'll, Nicole, I'll ask you to add for our convenience what that date will be in the record, because I don't remember what the date is. But, uh, so all in favor of giving Kim, how to pronounce it again?
Doian.
Doian.
D O Y.
Thank you. One day of unpaid leave.
Aye.
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 All right. Any days, then the matter is dealt with. I'm going to also ask in the student matter that the boards jointly resolve to allow a student at, resident in Westminster to attend, to continue to attend the Grafton Elementary School and that the two boards will develop a memorandum of understanding in support of that.
For the following year.
For the following year. Thank you. So is there any, anything anyone wishes to say except West poll the board? Cardi will start with you.
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Why don't we, actually, why don't we fix it, Charlie?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm still, thank you.
Yes. Karen, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous that way. All right, very good. So, let's see, just check through the rest of our agenda. We have a seven, training and resources for members. There are a number of things we can get to you. There is, we can provide you with things like the state has a manual, they used to, of relevant education law. Try to get you Robert's rules. The Vermont, the Vermont School Board Association, we are not members of that for a whole variety of historical reasons. But there are services that they provide. And I'm curious as to what things you all would like to have. And you may not know, maybe some of you actually do, what, what resources would you like us to go find for you? Any thoughts on this at this point? We'll touch on this in following meetings as you guys sort of get your feet wet and say, I don't understand how this works. And it might be just things like education gobbledygook or the uninitiated. But just think about things that you think you need or want, that you think will help make you a more effective member.
Is there any, I'm sorry. Is there any kind of like flow chart that explains the organization of the unions?
Yes.
That would be helpful for me, because you've talked about a bunch of different committees and different boards. It would be helpful to understand how they overlap.
In fact, that sounds great. Then there is.
And how it's going to change. Yeah.
I said to Cheryl also of the budget. And I know that they're, you know, to have access to the budget and to see what our student costs are and so forth.
I think it's more than reasonable to see what the current budget, the true budget is and even perhaps prior year budget. That seems reasonable to me. So let me just write that down.
Planning what all of it means. You can look at the numbers for the heaven.
And, and maybe we annotate it a little bit better and that's something that, that, that we can help with. And so I'll, you can go to that as well.
And then also, if there was any kind of summary that like kind of steps forth what our authority is and what exactly we cover, that would be helpful. Because there's just a lot that goes into schools and school districts. So understanding like what specifically our role in the school board is, if there's any kind of summary out there.
It's already sort of.
Okay. I'm sure if there's some specific.
It'd be great if you guys for all of us to have it.
Right.
Good thing we're in this, this small court to kind of rattle this down. I'll talk about, go ahead.
Well, well, there's, there's sort of a helpful guideline that I remember reading when I got into it about exactly that and the fact that, and though you, you were elected to be on the board, you do not have authority to, to make decisions that are involved regarding the school or, and that, and that there's certain sort of ethical guidelines that it's wise to follow.
And there's some things that even, you know, board chairs always have to be reminded of. It's time to be reminding of it. Board chairs, you're not speaking to the board unless, except for, you know, we extreme, you know? Well, you're the sports person of the board. Be careful to presume what the board wishes to do because you're simply a member who runs the meetings and organizes the agenda. Yes.
Don't need an answer now, but the whole question about the distinction between the superintendent's authority and our authority. But I was very surprised that Andy needed to ask us to give one day leave to an employee. So clearly there are areas which are.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Well, the way, the way to, one way to think about this is what Fletcher Proctor, our old Westminster town moderator and ex-chair of the Westminster School Board, put it, is supervisory union is an organization that is a service organization for the districts. And so we're in a sense employing, together with other, other towns and the high school, we're employing an office to help with all of the rules and regulations and dictates from the state and, and payroll and so on and so forth. And so it's kind of an office that is, that is a service organization for the districts.
Right, and that's why, why each district sits as an equal because essentially it, so it is not. And this gets very weird because frankly, the state has muddied this from some fairly sloppy legislation that makes it not quite as clear that that's what the role is. Because now the, the SU has full authority over things like, like special ed and full authority of things like transportation, but you have a governing structure that still assumes that it's a coordinating committee. And you can't be both things simultaneously. And it doesn't bear close, real close scrutiny if you're a daughter of eyes and a cross or a T is going to make you crazy. Be that as it may, we can help you with, get one of the items on our little list is the fact that the scope of authority, we have the so-called Articles of Agreement. We've been running them for two years, though they were voted down by, by our district. We're running them anyway, hello? We have a high school, that's a high school charter that makes reference to all sorts of things that don't exist anymore that needs to, desperately needs to be cleaned up. So the issue you bring up is finally, not only because we need to tell you what, how it's officially done, how it's unofficially done and what needs to be fixed to get the two things in coordination with each other. I'm sorry, Krista, you know, you said we were not to make, not to pull too hard on that experience of you as a lawyer, but going to get pulled a little bit, I can't help it.
Just one other thing that is, is kind of important.
Yes.
Is that we're small halls, we're, there's two boards here.
Yeah.
Small boards. You, you, if you get together with other members of your board, not in a public setting with minutaking and so on and so forth, and talk about, you, you cannot or should not get together with other members of your board, at least a, a majority of the board, and talk about board members without it being this meeting or an alternative. Meaning it has a, it is a public, it has a, as a minutator. So that's something that especially in this past year when Westminster Board only had three people, we couldn't legally call each other up and say, talk about school. Or certainly take any decision from the school. So that's something to be pretty alert.
Yeah, and the, the other, the other place where the, I mean, open meeting laws is a game people play a lot of times when they don't like decision boards made or they want to, they want to talk about it or say, well, somehow there's been a violation that they've imagined of, of the meeting law. But the place where, where violations do occur and they're inadvertent, but they happen, is when one member or sometimes several decide they have a great opinion on a matter that will be before their board and decide it's time that they all, that we all learn about it. And well, that's not really okay. Board, board members can bring to your chair's agenda items. Any board member, at least the way we run, if you have an item that you'd like brought up, just tell your chair and it would be incredibly unusual if they didn't put it on the agenda. But long narratives to spamming the entire SU about your opinion of the state of negotiations or the, or whether or not we need to change the school year or whether or not the budget is meets your personal privilege, that is not okay. I saw your hand up.
No, it's just that. A lot more information than I can put into my head at the moment. But, you know, I think that what was asked for was sort of the, the way it's all structured and when we can go from there, then maybe we can come to the meetings and ask some questions about, okay, if this happens, how does that work and so forth? You know, once we get it.
Right. One of the things we did last year and may, and may talk about doing again, maybe at the SU level where everybody comes, is we had, we had some training with, with our education attorney who has done this type of stuff for ages and is also, you know, by some of us consider a friend, Pietro Lynn. And I'd, I'd be very open to having him do that again. We'll bring that up.
I think having the, the written thing, that Krista was really talking about.
Yeah, no, I think, I think.
Having that data would be really helpful. Then if a person came, we'd have something, we would know who we're asking.
And I, I would encourage members to be fairly assertive if you don't get the material that you need. I, I think it's extremely important during the two, to, to get help with that.
Absolutely. I just want to go back to Charlie's question about why the personnel matter was brought here. It may not be clear that there are supervisory union employees. However, the teachers are employed by the school districts. So, so she is an employee currently for the Union Elementary School District. And July one, she'll be an employee of the Westminster School District. So that clearly was the reason.
I see. And since she.
So there's bound to be a number of things like that where it's not entirely clear, but there's a reason why it's the superintendent's call or it's the board's call.
One could have made the argument that the, that that was a, a union matter only, but is again, as a matter of, since, since we've determined right along that we will operate sort of as one big happy family and not let those donations be a thing. Get your own practice, for those of you who will be, you know, taking up the reins in full.
So where is this invitation to Rockingham Board? When is that?
Go ahead.
The Rockingham Board question, you slightly raised it before, you want to address that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the.
Oh, so sorry, the invitation to the Rockingham Board.
The Grafton, Athens, Westminster, Unified District and, and the Westminster Board have been working jointly ever since the, as long as we've been able to get away with it. We, we did it while we were appealing the, the original ruling of, of the courts until we, until it went to the Supreme Court. until we, until it went to the Supreme Court. We decided that as far as we were concerned, it was still, it was still an entity until we had a final determination. It wasn't. And when we, when we first, when, when the Westminster folks went, went that step and elected them, elected a town, school district board, during the appeal process and after the appeal process, we have worked as a joint board. We believe these are two different districts, but we've found, I think it's fair to say, we found that it's been really wonderful to have everybody working collaboratively. If anything, it's, I think it's helped get everybody on the same page in terms of, you know, it's been, not been a lot of sharp divisions and which, which sometimes happens in, in boards. It's happened in high school, what can I want to think about? And my hope is that we can bring the folks from Westminster in and extend that because it would be really nice and maybe a small mercy.
You mean Rockingham.
The Rockingham, excuse me, what I do is say Westminster. Bring the Westminster folks in and do the same thing, have, especially have all the elementary school boards, really. I don't know necessarily that we need the high school folks, but the elementary schools all have the same kind of issues. They're all dealing with, with K to six or K to eight education issues. And we all get to know each other because.
So Jack, one of the schools that Rockingham, you know, is looking over.
The Rockham, the Rockingham Town Board has, has authority over the Saxons River School, has authority over Center School, it was right in BF, and also runs the middle school.
Yes, okay.
So that's how that works.
So the Villas Falls and Saxons River, or, or so to speak.
Right, right, it's within that confines. Now, it gets a little weird because of course, you know, North Westminster looks like it's still part of BF, but it's not, but you guys know that more than most. So that's, but, but the point is that we were all originally going to be forcefully merged together and thought as we should try to cooperate and work, and if we can figure ourselves a network of cooperating schools, school districts, that would save everybody a lot of time.
So this is a recommendation to invite the Rockingham Board?
Yes, I, I, what we would be looking for here is a motion to authorize the chairs of the Westminster, of the Westminster and Unified Elementary School Districts to extend an invitation to the Rockingham School Board to meet and to discuss ways that we may collaborate more closely.
This would be like a separate meeting to do that, I'm trying.
Well, my hope, my hope is that like this meeting is a joint meeting.
Yes.
That some meetings of ours instead of being.
That Rockingham would be part of it.
That Rockingham would be part of it, so that.
It'd be twice a year or something.
You know, if, if I had my brothers, it'd be several times a year, but at least let's, let's start baby steps. Let's everybody in a row at least a couple of times to see where we go from there.
Related to that, we've also, one idea that, that this like leading of all elementary school boards might be core, and that we could think in terms of really making it easier for the superintendent and other of the issue staff not to have to report at so many different meetings and part of the attend business. And then separate from that is once or twice a year to have the middle school and the high school boards.
And everybody want to be happy family.
And we did that twice in the alternative governance phase exploration that we were trying. And we just saw the value in, in sitting across the table and listening to one another and learning. Because these kids are all in our community.
At least had her hand up, I think.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Hi, well, I'm sorry, this isn't on this subject, but I have to leave the meeting a couple of minutes before eight. So it'll be about five minutes, I'll just be leaving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jack, I, I'd like to make a motion that the boards, the Union Board and the Westminster Board authorize the chairs to extend an invitation to the Rockingham Board to find a time to meet jointly to work on ways in which we all, all elementary districts could cooperate.
Second that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this point, any whack clarities why we're trying to do this? Anything among our remote folks?
No.
All right, then, call the question. So all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Any opposed? I think any. All right, let's see, what other, one other item, then I think the folks in Westminster get off the hook here. And that is negotiations update. And I, this, we're going to just talk about what's on the public record. Do you, is on here, do you want to talk to that now? Cheryl, do you want to wait until we meet again and talk about this?
Right, I think I briefly addressed earlier that, that, you know, we have gone through a process and there is an agreement and we're waiting to get those documents signed. And then, and then the actual documentation will come to each of the boards to approve. And once each of the boards approve it, then it'll go back to the, but we are hopeful. It's a, a long process, but we're hopeful that we have reached a agreement.
And the details of that agreement are still, need to be private within the negotiation committee because it hasn't been signed yet, etc.
That's correct.
Right, there was, there was, there was some grammar and there was, there was a whack, there was a passage that needed to treat, you see, that was being taken care of as far as I know.
You know, a, a long process, but in the end respectful and cooperative and moving of the same.
We will try to, one of the things that boards used to do and stop doing and start doing is something called the packet. What is the packet, it's going to be the material that you need to look at and need time to read in advance so that you're not just presented with it on the night of the meeting. And this is going to be, I promise, part of your first packet will be the text of that contract. So there's a short, a short one, but there's also something called reflective organizing agreement. And for those who have, need bedtime reading, this should do it for you. So we'll try to get that to you as well. Try to make a big note, CVA to everybody, aren't you, sorry you asked, all right.
Can you quick director comment and then you have the continuation of the union.
Right. Why don't you do that with the Westminster folks?
All right, sure.
All right, nothing better to add, thank you.
All right, this is your first meeting. At the, at this point in time, people simply make comments if they would choose. There's never a problem.
Just happy to be on the board, I'm excited to, I love Westminster.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you very much. And Jeff, would you like to make any comment?
No comment at this time.
Okay, well, thrilled to have you here and that would be, I mean, we'll have Karen if she would like to when she comes back.
Sure.
Make a comment, but certainly again, to thank all the folks in Athens and Grafton for the support that we've given for Westminster throughout this process. And to thank everybody who's willing to serve and we're delighted to have the new members as well as those continuing. And just all of us, you know, as Tina said a few minutes ago, it's hard to imagine how difficult the last two years have been for all the educators, teachers and everyone else in the schools. And part of our goal is to provide a much support and encouragement in possible form while also being all responsible with the job to keep it overall. So again, I appreciate everybody's support on this process. Sharon, you just, and come back at a time when we're briefly making director's comments.
When you assign me to do this.
Yeah.
Yes, you're now a five day committee.
Watch out what happens.
Never leave a meeting.
Just brief director's comments if you want to say anything and then we'll turn to you.
It's just nice to meet everybody, that's what I'm wanting to say and to see the kind of work that people are doing.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be a part of it.
We're delighted, thank you.
You want to ensure your board, that would be fun, hang out and if they can hang out.
The other director's comments and then we'll.
Okay, well, we could do everybody then, that would, that's fine. So why don't we do, do that, starting with David.
I'm happy to be here, I'm, I'm excited to have the Westminster Board expanded members of the Westminster Board be expanded and new members, so we're very thankful of Jeff and Tina and Karen that you came forward to put your names on the ballot, so, thank you.
Oh, Hardy, I'm ready to start moving forward.
Excellent. I win.
It's been really interesting today, I feel like I've learned some more stuff already. And I've enjoyed working with the Westminster Board immensely. I hope we do get this occasional get together, I think it's really helpful. We all have something to bring, another idea.
Krista.
I'm excited to be here, in 2000, I was part of the first class ever from Athens to come here, like in first grade. So I was part of the first class of Athens to come to Grafton. And so it's exciting to, to be here now as a grown up and back in my library. And so 20 years went fast, so I'm excited to be here.
Well, that's wonderful, thank you for that. I just wanted to say to everybody, I'm really thrilled to have you all here. Come to the SU meeting, whether you are a voting member or not. And we have lots of work to do and please, never hesitate to speak up. Never hesitate to ask a question. Never hesitate to say, this is insufficient information, I may regret that. And, but the board works best when Cheryl and I talk the least in the room. So this is, you know, the, the training wheels are coming off sort of immediately. And don't be afraid to, to state your views on things, really, that's what makes this work best. I was really thrilled to have the variety of views that we have here. It makes for better work, you know, thank you all again. And with that, you have, you, you, no, no, you haven't, you haven't, you need your motion.
I'll interrupt your motion, I'm a Westminster school board.
Make a motion.
All the time.
All right. Yeah, because, because you're part, you're part of this issue. Okay, oh, Hardy, we needed you. Oh, yeah. You get a two meter. All right, let me, let me just quick touch on this. We, the next time we meet, we are going to need to, guys, if you'll, if you'll, excuse me, Krista.
Sorry, good time. Krista, we're at that.
Yeah, we're at that, guys. The next time we meet, which might be sooner rather than later. You all saw the warning that we did for the town meeting, for the, for the, for the vote for your positions and the money and all the rest of it. Normally, these things are done in a district meeting or in, or a town and district meeting, but because we're a joint thing, it's going to have to be the three towns meeting as a district, having a location. Why are we doing this? God knows. Why, the reason we're doing this is, is because we have Articles of Agreement that were posed on this by the state, which we have never validated. The state has said that we can only change it so much, but there's a language in it that takes no account of the fact that Westminster is a separate county. Literally listen to things you cannot change, the fact that Westminster is part of it, so we're going to. Now, I have been working to get a draft out, but we need to have a new Articles of Agreement. Need to figure out how many members are going to be on our board, is it going to, are we just going to work out four? That sounds terrible, are we going to expand it to six? What are we going to do, is it going to be by district or is it going to be by this goofy system that we now have where we run it large and reserve, and reserve, reserve seats? Because that would allow Athens to have more.
And you're talking post June 30?
Right, but the fact is, but, but, but the way this works, you still, Westminster folks still have a vote on it if they wish to.
That's fine, I, I know, but, but it's really relevant to, is it going to be a, a board where we, there's two people from Athens and three people from Grafton, or three people from Grafton, three people from Athens, or?
What's the name of the district?
What's the name of the district?
Right, and, and, and it's also going to be, this is why it's important that you be part of it. This is the, part of the conditional agreement is that we have a statement that says that we do the financial arrangement. In this particular case, there's a surplus. So there's a couple of formulas that have been circulated about how to do that. The question is, is it the money that the two towns paid, is it the money the two towns paid plus the money that the state paid on behalf of the towns? Because that's part of the surplus too. And I've had Hardy knock some numbers out which have been circulated. We, we have to have, we have to have that before the voters. And we may have, so that needs to be agreed on at that meeting. So I'm going to be.
Has to be agreed on at the district.
Has to be agreed on at the district meeting.
Which is a meeting of, that's technically all voters of all.
Three towns, there you go.
Actually be about six feet.
It might be, well, although with, when money shows up, sometimes people show up for those. But it's going to be important to, to have in the net, we don't have to have the language of the Articles done by our next meeting, but by the time we meet in April, this means in April, we need to be able to have had that circulating for at least a couple of weeks in advance. And I'm going to, I'm going to send around a draft and then, then depending on what people, and when people have specific objections, we'll call a committee meeting to just look at that and then send it to a Pietro to make sure, because he's the official lawyer, to make sure it passes his saliva test and put it in front of all of meeting and state. So that's, that's the reason I wanted you to know this is, this is coming. And we need to, we, we need to have everybody meet at our next meeting to, with the numbers and knock those out because I want that, because that language has to be, and the dollar map has to be in the district warning.
And, and there's, as you, as you touched on, there's a variety of ways in which this surplus, which is over a million bucks, can be divvied up. And logic behind each of them is it divvied up by how much money each town put in, how much money each town plus the state put in on their behalf.
Right.
What the population is, what the student count number is, there's, there's different, different ways. This particular, you know, is the recommendation of, of RHR Smith.
And, and, and these are different and dollars matter to people and.
Exactly.
We'll all take a place, be nice to each other and try to figure this out and hopefully that.
So are you, are you thinking of just like putting this out to be approved? Or are you thinking of coming up with different options that may be discussed?
I saw the, I think that we need to figure out what we're mutually comfortable with if we can do that. Because one of the things about having an open meeting is that there's nothing that compels the attendees to use our numbers. They could go and use an entirely different set, they can move from the four to use an entirely different set of numbers if they so choose, which is why, why, one of the many reasons why I want to do this is like if we decide to go with the three-three formula, we may have some pushback on that. Oh, and, because I've already heard some from very, from people in various towns, the two towns. And there's one other thing, and I, I forget about it. We will probably be, we will be asking to buy the building back. We have been. We have been, this building.
The town owns it.
The town owns this building because we got, my board got persuaded to sell it to them when there was a panic about Act 46. But extra money can only go to facilities we own. And weirdly enough, we've had pushback on that from the town folks here a little bit. So...
They want to take the, the sale themselves?
The, the, it, it's stupid, but, uh, we're going to, I will, you, you know that I'm going to take some steps in advance to get something together. They've, they've suggested that maybe we want to get it together on the 21st. And I said, well, gosh and golly, that's up to my board and it's up to the convenience of, uh, of Pietro, who wasn't consulted about this date they picked out of the air. And so...
The 21st of which month?
This month. Put it down, put it in pencil because I don't know that it's happening yet because Pietro's going to be there. And quite frankly, you all got to be okay with it because I'm really tired of this high-handed nonsense. But, uh, be that as it may, they were told, oh, their attorney, who, you know who their attorney is? Swearing. Larry laughed at them. Said, what the hell are you talking about? He said, well, we don't want to talk about this in public session. They didn't want to talk about the fact that the lawyer said that you're idiots. What are you trying to do? Um, but that's what happened.
Um, is there a date fixed for the district meeting?
We will need to set that at the next one.
It's meeting yet now.
We can't set that.
Can't set that.
And, uh, is there, there is no warning yet for that district meeting?
We will need to approve a warning and I'll try to have a model warning drafted to bring to you all at our next meeting.
And that warning, I, I think you, at least at some meetings, if a warning can happen, uh, it, it takes at least 30 days, usually 40 days for between when it's warned and when you can actually meet.
So my, my assumption is it's going to be like the end of April plus week to May. You know, just because the, the way, yeah, because that's a timeline. Plus, plus, but candidly, you know, people get out of the stuff. I don't want to, I don't want to start everybody off with, oh, we're only going to meet twice a month and we're meeting every week. You know, that's not okay, so...
You have a tie, possible time longer to be meeting to then...
For the, for the, for the, for the district meeting?
Oh, no, there's one special one with the town.
They tend to meet, like, either 5:30 or 6:00. But, uh, again, here's the deal, you tell me what, you know, if you get objections, tell me, but I really, my, my gate for all this is going to be, uh, this is going to be, uh, Pietro's available because, you know, I mean, I, I get it and we want to be accommodating. We want to be friendly about this and, you know, all these guys are all hardworking folks, just like we are on, on the board there. But, you know, at the end of the day, the guy who gets paid has to call when he's available and I don't know that yet. So I...
Later times are normally better for me, 6:00 pretty early.
Yeah, yeah. And by the way, if you, this, if our 6:00 meeting turns out to be kind of a hassle, that's for 6:30.
Yeah, because six, seven, sevens normally are the deals where I understand I have to be late for votes, especially if they're...
Yeah, because, well, it's also because these meetings, I, I've, I've promised people the last two hours, but man, you can have a hard time doing that.
Yeah, so 6:00 is just very early for me, but as of right now, it's not a problem.
Okay. Well, you know, like I said, I, I, you know, I don't want, I don't be trash to my, my friends on the SLY4 because they're trying to do the best they can too and I get that. But, uh, we need to get the building back because that extra money will not come to us unless we have the building back. So we got to get that done. And my guess would be we would make the offer at the, at this meeting. And I don't know if it would have to be a joint meeting of the town to approve it or how that mechanics are going to work. And who's to say that they'll say yes?
Isn't that, is that a situation where the town just bought it for $10?
Yeah, oh, I know, I know. We, we, this, as I said, I, I was kind of thrown that this turned out to be even a basis objection. I told, I told SLY4 that if they wanted to sell us the, sell us to Town Hall for a few weeks so we could get them some extra money, they should, well, fix the roof at Town Hall, you know? So, all right, well, so that's, that's, that's the discussion. Um, I'm going to just ask formally if I have permission from you all to continue to, to draft, to get this draft finished and circulated to you and to contact, uh, to contact Pietro to get this meeting set up and all that.
So does it work that like we draft things, we wouldn't send it to our lawyer?
You know, it's a good question. Uh, and, and, and the good, and the good answer is, you know, you probably shouldn't. But the actual answer is that, uh, I wrote the terms that got us, you know, I, I, I wrote the documents that we used to get us out of, uh, the, uh, out of the...
Yeah, well, as long as someone, someone, someone looked at it. $400 an hour adds up very quickly.
Well, that, there, there, there you go. And we, we got, we...
Let's just say what it is.
And we, we, we got, we got real hometown discount from, from, particularly from Larry Slason during that process, for God bless him. But, but the reality is that it does. And, you know, I've written contracts half my career, so I...
Yeah, as long as someone...
Oh, yeah, no, no. We don't sense that without somebody taking the eyeball. And, uh, I, you know, if, I said this to go, really? Um, you can do that because that will save us that, that extra hour.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, there's a lot of very specific legal decisions that the lawyer is going to say, is always going to come back and say, five-person board you want to have, three-person board you want to, what do you want the name of it is here to be?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're filling to the, 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 the hour.
Well, the, the main thing is that the, the interim Articles of Agreement are written by John Ruscos Savage, who I've known for a very long time. And I'm really sorry I'm not aware because there's so much I'm hearing on a regular basis. But the, but the fact is, is that there's some, there's some screwy legal language in this letter. And it's, you know, there were, there were provisions in it that weren't ever enforceable to begin with and that we can't keep in it even though it says you're supposed to.
Yeah.
So we've got to make some changes and that's where the lawyer is going to be important. It's going to be, you know, can, can I, since we've got the State Board of Education saying you can do this thing, that would seem to be, that, that empowers us to make the changes to actually enact that, not to have stranded language, uh, that we never approved of and that I can't get passed. So...
All right, that's it, kids. It was a great, entertaining motion, Sharon. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, TV.